All right. Then, thank you very much. We will call the December meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. It looks like the role has been taken, is that correct?
Yeah.
Are we waiting in, or?
Well, they might be having problems hearing us.
Brad, we've got you on. I don't know if you can hear me. And then, on your end, if you're not speaking, we need you to mute. But I can hear you.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, is there something going on, or are they turning me here?
All right, let's try. Brad, can you? This is Lance.
No.
Lance to Brad.
Yeah, we're all in.
Brad, can you hear me?
Let me text you.
Okay, thank you. You can go back now.
Yes, thank you.
All right, this could get interesting.
This is gonna get fun.
All right. I think we called the meeting to order. We have taken the role. At this time, I put a call on Vice Chair Fisher to please come forward for the invocation. I ask the body to rise for that and then remain standing before the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you please pray with me? Dear Lord, we come before you today. And, Lord, I just pray for peace. Lord, as we live in interesting times and in times of great trouble, as I think about the last year, from the pandemic, to rioting, to civil unrest, to so many things, Lord. I pray for peace in our nation. I pray for peace across the globe. I pray for wisdom for us as we come here today to serve the constituents of Wood County. I pray that we would be mindful of what we believe our duty to be, and I pray that we would support our convictions. I pray also, as I do every time I'm here, I pray for the less fortunate, for those in Wood County who have little and are in need. May we always remember them. May we always seek to be charitable and gracious to all. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank all of those in attendance today. I want to thank you for following the masking ordinance that we now rule that we have in the courthouse with a resolution to follow today. But I want to thank you for complying with that, as there are choices as to which stores you go to, you know, where you decide to be out of the community. But there's only one courthouse, and I want to make sure that we keep our staff and the ability to function available. So I appreciate that. The first thing on our agenda today is disposition of minutes from the previous meeting, and I would entertain a motion to that effect by Wagner, Seton, and LaFontaine. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye. Bride, Hamilton, Curry?
Yes. That holds a yes.
I think we've got enough.
I think we've got enough.
All right. That motion carries.
Okay. Curry, yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you. It was unanimous. We'll go to excusals today. We have none. We do have three supervisors today joining us virtually, supervisors Bride, Curry, and Hamilton. We have no resignations today. We have no appointments or reappointments. But I'm guessing that the next thing on the agenda, we have some public comment. Looks like we have a few people here who may want to make a public comment. At that time, would you ask me to come to the microphone? If you would please identify yourself. The clerk has the three minute up. That's allowed for public comment. When we get to the end of that, I will pretty strictly enforce that. If you are two words away from that, in a sense, we'll probably let you finish that. But we'd like to stay within that time limit. So with that being said, at this time, I will open the floor up to public comment.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim Day. I am not a Wood County resident, but I am a member of the leadership of Wisconsin Grant Sons of Liberty, which is a statewide constitutionalist group. It works to promote constitutional rights and constitutional inheritance. Being that the Second Amendment is an integral part of our Constitution and the Bill of Rights, it is of great interest to us. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak today in favor of the resolution for the Second Amendment, and I would like to specifically discuss the purpose of such a resolution. Some people have asked rightly, what is the purpose of this type of resolution and what, if anything, does it accomplish? Truthfully, all such Wisconsin county resolutions are primarily symbolic. For some, but symbols have both purpose and influence, they can be inspirationally powerful and have deep motivational meaning to the people. This resolution is a statement of principle that declared that the county supports the Second Amendment and imposes any further infringement on the constitutional rights of people. These resolutions have become a trend now sweeping the nation. Wood County is not alone in this endeavor. Nine hundred and seventy-four of the nation's 3,142 counties, roughly one-third, have enacted such a resolution over the last couple of years. Wisconsin's already seen 14 of its 72 counties enact a resolution to affirm Second Amendment constitutional rights over the last year, one county at a time. While these resolutions are being passed, the Second Amendment is about more than hunting, self-defense, or sport shooting. We're conditioned to think that if tyranny were to come, it would most likely be in the form of the federal government, and we would look to our state government to protect us. But who would think the state government could be the tyrant? People of California, Maryland, and Virginia thought that as well, and may have been contending with oppressive state governments actively infringing on their rights. If I were to spoken to you six or seven months ago, you might have said, this isn't Wiscon- I mean, this is Wisconsin. This isn't Virginia or California, and we don't have issues like they do. But the situation is changing. In this year alone, our Wisconsin state government has punished people for attending church as to freedom of religion, gathering in groups, the right to peacefully assemble, speaking out in objection, freedom of speech, demanding government listen to the people, the right to petition government for a regress agreement, and stated that the governor alone decides who is the press and may report from the Capitol. It's a freedom of the press. These examples are all five of the rights guaranteed by the First Amendment, all infringed this year in this state. So I ask, who then protects the people when the state becomes the tyrant? If the state government won't protect our rights, who will? What is the next level of government we turn, we as the citizens, turn to? And the answer is the county, and this is why the resolution's in front of you. You are the next protector of our rights. It's why we have seen sheriffs and county boards across the nation refuse to carry out some of the orders of governors. Those sheriffs and county boards are placing the state and federal constitutions first, and rightly so. Will you do the same? For most of you, the decision to run for the office of county supervisor is probably not very controversial. You had expectations of working out a budget, deciding which roads to repave next year, maintain staffing, all mundane but very necessary activities. You probably didn't foresee being a miss to a constitutional issue, yet here you are. And I envy you, as you have the opportunity to do something of significance that you deserve. A little bit more than deserved. Preserve our liberty and rights. We kind of be able to take a chance to do this.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I also ask the group to refrain from applause, refrain from any reaction, whether you agree or disagree with the statements, because we could have the ableful size of the ailer. Please, continue next.
I'm Lynn Tieres from Wood County. What's you doing? Can I have my time back?
Claiming the time.
We claim the time.
This motherfucker is swearing.
All right, you get one rule. We're at three minutes.
Okay. This board spends a large amount of time carefully crafting and managing a budget. In this troubled year, fiscal security is difficult to maintain. That said, I can show you the substantial impact of the Second Amendment on the Wood County economy. In Wood County, there are five gun ranges, five gun clubs, nine gunsmiths and manufacturers, eight gun stores, nine bakery box retailers selling firearms and ammo, and 51 federal firearm licenses. Some of the businesses, business entities have more than one of these functions, and the total of unique business entities in the county related to the Second Amendment is 68. This amounts to several hundred employees, and the various taxes from these businesses as well into the seven figures when you cannot, when you count property taxes plus payroll, income, inventory, sales, or any other tax revenue generated from the people living or visiting Wood County and enjoying the Second Amendment rights. This lawful Second Amendment activity is integral to the county's economy and should be protected. There is another necessity of this resolution. In the wake of the chaos caused by the pandemic, by the civil insurrection striking so many of our cities, there is inevitable concern with the threat to our rights. The Second Amendment has long, has long been held to be the insurance policy for all the rest of our constitutional rights. It puts teeth in the Bill of Rights. If there was ever an argument in favor of the Second Amendment, it has had been the events of the year of 2020. We have seen rioting, looting, burning, murder, and mayhem in our cities, including Wisconsin. Forty-six Wisconsin cities have been, have seen protests in 2020, and some of the protests turned violent riots, including the cities of Kenosha, Wauwautosa, Madison, Milwaukee, Green Bay, and Racine. Law and order are breaking down, yet groups call for defunding the very civil institutions that protect and maintain a civil society. On the federal and state level, elected leaders are proving unable to effectively and demonstratively govern. Cherished ideals of free speech, due process, the rule of law, legal justice, and the freedom of conscience are under attack by mobs and factions opposed to our form of government and to our political, economic, social, and legal institutions. This void must be filled, and the line must be held. To whom can the people turn? The counties are the next line in constitutional defense, and that is why nationwide county supervisors are now taking up these resolutions to draw the proverbial line and state that the people insist on preserving our rights. A Second Amendment and such a resolution demonstrates to the people of the county that their board of supervisors stands with the people and the Constitution. It makes evident that the supervisors take their oaths of office seriously and publicly declare their intent to uphold them. Pandemic chaos be damned. The main question often asked is why the county board of supervisors need to spend time on such resolutions. These resolutions are necessary and timely wake-up call to the state governments to obey the federal and state constitutions, and that elected leaders must preserve and respect the rule of law. We are free citizens of these United States, and we intend to remain free when our constitutional rights are attacked. The better question to ask is, do they truly have more important functions than the government body?
Ma'am, I have to enforce the limits we have a lot.
Well, it's up to you guys.
We have a lot of people who want to make a public comment. If you'd like to relinquish your time, if one person speaks longer, I'd be more than happy to do that, but we, like I said, have rules. So, Mr. Heiser.
Thank you. My name is Tom Heiser, County of Grand Rapids. Mr. Chairman, and members of Wood County Board of Supervisors, there are two items on the agenda that I would like to address. I come here today in support of making Wood County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. The Second Amendment has come under attack in our country several times, and we need our local grassroots elector officials to stand up for the Constitution. I spoke to Sheriff Becker on the phone this morning. He wished he could be here, but he is ill, and he said that he does support this resolution. So I'd like to put that on record, that he gave me authorization to mention that for him. It has been said that a constituent, that if a constituent has concerns on an issue, they should contact their respective elected officials. At this time, I'd like to request that my county board supervisor, Bill Clendenick, and the rest of the county board, to vote in the affirmative for this resolution for Wood County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county. On a separate matter, I understand that the county board is also going to act in the resolution to require masks in all county buildings. You do have control of these buildings, and I respect that. I ask that you require masks to be worn. Please provide a mask that protects the person wearing it. I have shared the following information on the, found on the box of blue masks that many of you wear, and I'm going to quote from that box. "When properly worn, it reduces potential contact to the wearer to fluids, but does not eliminate the risk of contracting any disease or infection." This is on the side of the box, like this mask right here came in. The country has gone from not needing masks, as initially reported by Dr. Fauci and Speaker of the House Pelosi. We're told to wash our hands and wear a mask. To wash your hands, wear a mask from social distance, and to stay home to flatten the curve. I don't see that happening. As of yesterday's information, Wood County has a .001 fatality rate for COVID-19. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, additional public comment.
Good morning. My name is Mike Jerry. I'm here to address from our last board meeting. There were certain people present that did not believe that there were any kind of Second Amendment abuses in this country. I'm just going to list a few, so bear with me for a few moments. During the antifederal period, many slave states permitted black freedmen to own firearms. On occasion, these states would renegate and carry out statewide confiscation raids on blacks. Just one example, in Florida, these raids were performed in 1825, 1833, 1847, 1861, and 1941. In 1838, the state of Missouri ordered the disarming of all Mormons and the confiscation of their weapons. Governor Lilburn Boggs issued Executive Order 44 to exterminate a community of disarmed Mormons who were then massacred at Hawn's Mill. In 1890, the U.S. Army captured and confiscated weapons from the Lakota Sioux at Wounded Dee in South Dakota, that resulted in the massacre of 297 men, women, and children. In 1942, the U.S. federal government conducted a disarming of 100,000 Japanese Americans, 11,507 German Americans, 1,881 Italian Americans, and Americans of Czech, Romanian, Bulgarian, and Hungarian, sent prior to their detention in internment camps. In 1988, in Operation Clean Sweep, the Chicago Police Department, Chicago Housing Authority searched every public housing unit in the city without a warrant to seize all firearms. In 1991, New York Mayor David Dinkins got the city council to ban assault weapons, and using a 1967 database of registered long guns, Dinkins had the state police go door-to-door to look for weapons. 2001, using a registration database, the city of Chicago once again began door-to-door warrantless confiscation raids on residents, including ironically, police officers. 2005, during Hurricane Katrina, New Orleans Mayor Ray Nagin's banned all weapons, and the police and National Guard refused to go door-to-door to seize weapons without warrants. In response, Congress passed the Disaster Recovery Personal Protection Act of 2006, prohibiting mass confiscations. Citizens who've had their weapons seized successfully sued to recover the weapons that the city of Orleans to the state has not returned, and that confiscated weapons. My, my point here was just to point out the fact that it was, it was stated in our last meeting, since the 1790s, there's never been any abuse of this amendment, and this just goes to prove that, that fact is, is wrong, and people need to be educated on that fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Hi, I'm Joe Humphrey. I reside in Ridgefield Township, just up the road, and I'm here in support of this resolution to back the Second Amendment in Wood County. I do wish to say at the outset, I resent the fact that you're even considering requiring masks. Masks do nothing to prevent the spread of the virus. Educate yourselves. Okay, I'd like to go back to some history that Mike has provided. On April 19th, 1775, the Massachusetts Military Governor, General Thomas Gates, led 700 armed British troops to small towns of Lexington and Concord to secure private stores of powder, shot, and flints, and muskets. It was an act of gun control. Specifically, it was confiscation. The American people resisted, and the American Revolution ensued. Keep that in mind. On October the 2nd, 1835, and this is being dear to my heart, as a native born Texas son, the Mexican President Antonio Lopez de Santa Anna sent a company of gralones to the small Texas town of Gonzales to take a cannon that the townspeople used to ward off Comanche raids. It was an act of gun control, specifically confiscation. The people refused to give up the cannon, and the Texas Revolution became a shooting war, and we sold tons and tons of T-shirts that said, "Come and take it." On April 12th, 1861, the government of the state of South Carolina, at that time in rebellion to the United States, demanded that the U.S. Army turn over Fort Sumter and his cannons and rifles to the government of South Carolina. It was an act of gun control, specifically confiscation. The fort's commander, Major Robert Anderson, refused, and the South Carolinians fired upon the fort, and the U.S. Civil War became, became a shumy war. Again, keep that in mind. Each of these North American examples, the government attempted to seize weapons belonging to the people. The people refused, the revolution commenced, and that the aggressor government lost the war, and the territory and these people retained their arms. The teacher who has erroneously claimed there was never been an infringement of the Second Amendment, we submit to you these facts in evidence.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning. My name is Gene Nunez. I want to speak in support of the resolution. I've been an NRA member most of my life, and I think you need only travel across state lines to, to get a pretty quick understanding of the east and west coast, the elites and the cultural war that's coming our way, folks. You can't travel with a handgun in California. You can't go into Canada with a handgun. A lot of people don't know that. If you own a handgun in Canada, you have to register it, you're going down to the gun range for that day. If you come back that day and you stop at the restaurant, you can be thrown in jail. So, the assault is coming, and I'm here to tell you that. You know, we travel, like I say, across state lines a lot with guns, whether we're hunting or, and to do it lawfully is interesting. I mean, I have to case my gun to go through Minnesota and Illinois, and the rest of the way out west, I can stick it wherever I want to put it, loaded and such with my concealed carry permit from here. So, again, I think resolutions like this are really important. There's a lot more support than what's just in this room for the Second Amendment, and I just, again, want to speak in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
My name is Jeff Ruth. I'm a Wood County resident, and I want to finish the, part of what Lynn was saying to the, to the last part of the paragraph that she didn't get to finish. But it says, "The main question often asked by the county board of supervisors need to spend time on such resolutions. These resolutions are necessary and timely wake-up call for the state governments to obey the federal and state constitutions, and that elected leaders must preserve and respect the rule of law. We are free citizens of these United States, and we intend to remain free with our constitutional rights intact. The better question to ask is, there's truly and more important function for the government body at any level of government than the robust, robust and spirited defense of the people's liberty. After all, that is why our state and federal constitutions were written."
Thank you. Additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment?
Morning. My name is Andrew Requist. I'm a resident of Millador. Wasn't planning on even coming today, but I felt being here was necessary. When I talk about some of the plans for the possible upcoming administration, a Biden-Harris administration would turn the normal everyday gun owner into a felon overnight. If those people chose not to comply, this is according to the Biden-Harris campaign themselves, I'll explain. The Biden-Harris administration will regulate any semi-automatic firearm that is designed to hold 10 or more rounds. They would also regulate any magazine able to hold 10 or more rounds as an additional NFA item. Well, what all of that means in real terms is that anyone who currently owns or plans on buying a handgun or other semi-automatic magazine-fed firearm is now subject to a $200 tax stamp on the firearm, a $200 tax stamp on each magazine, additional cost for an NFA background check, and a wait period of up to a year or more. So let's give an example. Let's say someone currently owns, and I mean currently, one basic stock Glock 19 handgun. Out of the box, it would cost an additional $600. One gun, two magazines, three NFA items. Enforce that as an NFA item. Once it's registered as an NFA item, it would be required that the location of the firearm stored within the home be reported to the ATF. As it stands now, the ATF can inspect NFA items in individuals' homes. If a person failed to comply, he or she would be committing a felony, the sentence of which could be up to 10 years in prison. This effectively would turn the average law-abiding gun owner into a criminal by act of noncompliance. The majority of the people that do not know or are interested in the policies that will possibly be put into effect. It's, in my humble opinion, if they're, if they are the average and otherwise quiet citizen, will be heard. The Second Amendment was not written to limit state powers. The right to protect yourselves against tyrannical overreach was granted to all men after, by God, not the couple of them.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Give an additional public comment?
I apologize. I will be emotional. That fired me up. I wasn't going to talk, but it needs to be said. We've seen a lot happen this year. Cities burned down. We've sat quietly by, and we show up at meetings like this, and we go to here, we talk peacefully because that's what respectable Americans do. Well, we're getting to the point where we're not going to be peaceful much longer, and maybe some of us don't have the balls to look here and say that, but I do. We're organized. We're very organized, and we're starting to get very ticked off, and we would much rather work with our local governments, with our local law enforcement than against it. But if forced to, if forced to choose, we will take our liberties back. We've given way too much. We've lost things that we will never get back. We've lost liberties we will never get back, no matter how we fight, and this is the right way to fight. We're not smashing windows. We're not burning stuff down. We're here talking to you. This resolution, and I say get rid of the mask one, too, would be a good extension of the hand to the proud patriotic Americans in central Wisconsin to say, you have our backs, that you're supporting us, so we can work with you and with the local government instead of against. Instead of against, we need the support. We need to come together. We, we don't need unity from the left after four years of Russian collusion. He should have never been president. Now all of a sudden, they have a sketchy election, and now we're supposed to just unify? And then you're going to muzzle us and muzzle our children, which is just absolute abuse. Putting these masks on these children and the oxygen demand of the lower brain stem, don't even get me started. Hypercapnia. What happens when you rebreathe your CO all day long is not good for the brain. And so these resolutions put before you, like I stated, is an extension of the hand to the proud patriot Americans of central Wisconsin that you want to work with us and not against us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Supervisor Lightman?
Mr. Chairman, if there isn't any other comment, I do have from a District 17 resident a comment he wanted read into the record, so I may do that at this time.
Without objection.
Yeah.
My name is Leo Thomasgard. I have resided in the village of Port Edward since 1976. I retired after a 34-year teaching career in social studies and in public schools. I currently am the vice president of the Port Edward School Board and serve as the secretary of the Port Edward's Police and Fire Commission. of the Port Edward Police and Fire Commission. I am an Eagle Scout, was the scoutmaster in Port Edward for four years. I served in the U.S. Army Reserve for six years and was honorably discharged as a staff sergeant. I am not a hunter, but own both handguns and rifles mostly used over the years for target shooting. I have no problems with proper, safe, responsible use of reasonably normal firearms for legitimate legal purposes. I wish to voice my strong opposition to the proposed sanctuary county resolution on your agenda for the December meeting. I believe it is a waste of time and energy on your part to even consider a proposal that your own corporate counsel, Mr. Castonhold, advised you in his November 10 memo that, quoting now, "Such an ordinance would not be legal or enforceable, and I can't amend its language so as to make it legal and still accomplish the purpose of the drafters." This proposal is only for show and accomplishes nothing except to arouse emotions and create division at a time when there is far too much division already. A county simply cannot choose to ignore state or federal laws that supersede its authority. As those providing leadership and direction for the citizens of Wood County, you need to prioritize your time and energy toward issues and decisions having real impact and merit. This proposal has neither. It does nothing and can accomplish nothing. It is totally without merit and should not have come to the floor for a vote. Citizens of Wood County are dying of COVID almost every day.
I really appreciate, if we wouldn't have the reaction, it really diminishes the case you're trying to make. So I appreciate, you know, they remain silent during your public comment. I appreciate the same consideration.
People are out of work. People are wondering how they will pay their rent and mortgages. Folks worry about being able to somehow safely see their families for Christmas. And you decide to spend time on this. Be leaders. Do the responsible, right thing, and vote against this nonsense and get back to serious matters. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comment? All right, then. Seeing none, I... There's two things I'd like to do. The first thing I want to clarify, and it's nappy in front of the... Because some of them alluded to the... If you want to call up the masking resolution that comes before you pertains only to county hall buildings. This is not a countywide one, which I've heard from some people. Saying, "How can you require people out in the public?" It's not. It's in the courthouse here. Basically, to try to slow and spread as possible. Secondly, the resolution, page 241 in your packet, dealing with the Second Amendment, page 241, without objection from the body and due to the number of people that we have in the room, I'd like to bring that to the front of the packet for action now. Is there any objection to that? Supervisor Clendenin?
I don't care. I think since they have to listen to us, we have to listen to them. They have to listen to us and how we do this. I do object. Can I get to a vote, please?
All right, I'm going to do this by... I'll listen for a second, and then I'll do this by vote. One of my considerations with the number of people that we have in the room, the first question I was asked today is if I'd like to move those people to a separate room and appear virtually. And I said, "I don't know that that accomplishes what the public would like to do here." Supervisor Ashbeck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the number of people in this room here with the virus the way it is, I just so... Go to the amendment that... And they had it over with because of the people going in. We don't need all the breathing in here with many people.
That was my consideration here. So let me just ask this. Supervisors, all in favor of moving this to the front of the agenda? Please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Because I think, if I'm correct, is there anybody who objects other than Supervisor Clendenin? Supervisor Lightman objects also. So that carries. We're going to move this to the front of the packet. I would ask the clerk to please... This is page 241. We're going to wait a minute. Apparently, we're having a little trouble here with the system again.
We're having a lot of trouble again.
While they're working on that, I do appreciate the fact that the public shows up. I do appreciate the input. It's been stated a couple of times, that's what local government is all about. So we do appreciate your being here. Do appreciate the comments. Don't always appreciate technology.
I hate it.
Sorry.
Well, while working on that, I have no acknowledgements or recognitions today either. So when we get through this, we'll move into the packet.
Stay by me. I think it's a metal plate on my head.
Okay. Trent, I ask you, please then read the resolution when you read it.
This will be Resolution 20-12-1, to recognize the importance of the federal constitution's Second Amendment right to bear arms and to encourage the state and federal governments not to abridge that right through legislation or rulemaking. Fiscal note, none.
Okay, and I have a motion by LaFontaine. I have a second by Supervisor Zerflu. Is there discussion? Any discussion from the floor? Supervisor Clendenin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been before this county board. Now, this will make the sixth time. It started in the Safety Committee. And three of the people that are members of the Safety Committee are members that authorized this resolution. I only heard one of those people ever speak for or against or even considering this for the county board. And after that, that was... The first time it was is that it was not on the agenda. The second time, it went to the Safety Committee, which is the Sheriff's Department, and which I did hear him say he is for this at that meeting. And at that meeting, nobody spoke up. And then it went to the full county board. And the full county board decided that this should be taken to the Judicial and Legislative Committee. So we did. We got legal opinion on this. We had a room full of people. And we heard everybody that wanted to be heard. And I was criticized for letting them go on so long. But we did. We did it. And a motion was made, and it wasn't seconded. Another motion was made, and it was seconded, and a vote was taken on it, and it was a tie vote. Now, what can we do? We had people also that are on there that were attending that meeting, that are on this committee, on this resolution as sponsors. They never said a word. And I begged one of them that had a resolution. I said, "Why don't you come forward so these people can do it?" That was not done. So now, this is the sixth time. And the people in charge... I say, "Why don't you go down to Madison? Sounds like you've got them people on your side, and have a statewide. Have the state do this. Why come here and tell the city of Wisconsin Rapids, the city of Marsfield, the Townegram Rapids that I don't care what you do about gun control, the county is not going to... It's going to do it, and you can't do anything." Now, somebody's going to say, "Oh, well, counties, cities don't have a chance." There is one city, I believe it's Merrill, that has an ordinance against this. I think there's seven states that have it. Why not go down to the state legislature? We've got a future legislature leader that's on this resolution, need. Kick it down there. See what the state's got to say. Thank you.
Further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Supervisor Lightman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this brief because I've spoke on it before, and I think most people know how I feel. I've read the resolution over, I don't know how many times, probably more than 10. And it does bother me because the Second Amendment, nobody is questioning. This is a large nation, 330 million people. Duly noted from what residents have said, there have been problems. But think about it. 229 years. We are sitting here today. The Second Amendment is intact. We are functioning as a nation. Problems? Yeah, problems here and there. But two world wars, a civil war, countless recessions, depressions. I do not see the seriousness of the challenge to the Second Amendment. I'm going to be voting no when we vote on this.
Supervisor Fisher?
Thank you. I, believe it or not, I... Prior to 2020, I never even held a gun. I have never held a gun prior to 2020. Never cared to carry a gun. Was never an interest of mine. Quite frankly, I do believe in the Constitution. And I believe in supporting the Constitution. And Supervisor Lightman makes some fair points in the sense that the Constitution is intact. But the reality is, this resolution is in place to support the Constitution. We are trying to pass this in order to make a statement to the state of Wisconsin, to the federal government, that Wood County does support the Constitution and the Second Amendment, which we believe is the right of people to bear arms. I would encourage people, and some people in this room might not like this, but if you do not want... If you do not like what the Second Amendment says, you have every right to fight that. But for me personally, in 2016, in 2018, and now in 2020, I took an oath of office. And in that oath of office, I swear to support the Constitution of this great country, the United States of America. And I took an oath to support the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin, which I love. The Second Amendment is in the United States Constitution. In the state of Wisconsin Constitution, we talk about the right to bear arms. To me, an oath is a promise. And I will be voting for this because I want to be a person who keeps this promise. I promised to support the Constitution. I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Further discussion? Further... Supervisor Wenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get something straight right up front. I own a gun. I'm not... I am not anti-gun at all in any way, shape, or form. Listen, I want to talk for a second about Mr. Fisher's comment that he just made, that, you know, we took an oath to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin, and their laws and the laws and the rules of the... And the ordinances of Wood County. And I will do that. I pledge to my fellow supervisors, I will support the Second Amendment and the Constitution of the United States. I will do that. The problem is, I think this resolution before us goes far beyond that. It asks us to resist lawful changes made by either the federal or the state government if, for some reason or another, someone decides their purity or they represent a purity. I don't believe that's the case. I believe in the federal system. I believe in what's going on with the separation of powers. And I will support the lawful orders of the Commander in Chief, as I did in the military, too, as most of us who were in the military in place to also. And I will back up the Constitution. But I don't believe this resolution will do anything for us. And so I'm going to vote against it. Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion? Thank you, Supervisor Wenner. Further discussion? Any further discussion? I have not seen or hearing any. I would ask you to please vote. Supervisor Brad? Supervisor Brad?
No.
No for Supervisor Brad. Supervisor Curry?
Supervisor Curry, no.
Supervisor Hamilton?
No. Yes.
Supervisor Hamilton is a yes. So he punched all those in. So that resolution carries 12... What do we have there?
12 to 7.
7. Do we have any abstentions? No. Can't see that part. The resolution carries on a 12 to 7 vote. Thank you. I'm going to give just a second for those... Supervisor Zerflu, I'm going to give a second. You can...
I was just going to ask if we think it's short, a three-minute recess.
I was going to give the opportunity for everybody to leave before we ask. So if you want to take a three-minute recess through that right time. And I know we try to do this all the time. I want to thank you for your call during that discussion. That's the one thing that we preach everywhere, that I have the opportunity to speak in front of a number of county boards throughout the state on an annual basis. This has been a little different here. But the one thing we want to talk about is that civility, that decorum. And I think our board probably shows more than, I'm going to say all, certainly most, not all. So I thank you for that. And that's a large group. It's not easy. It sometimes is tough to contain their enthusiasm. Guess I'll leave it at that as we move forward. I'm going to make one other comment before I get into the packet here. I had a counties association, we had an executive committee meeting and a full board meeting last week, Thursday and Friday. And one of the things that was interesting, and I just wanted to share it with you is, you know, we were afraid in Wood County we'd be down in sales tax, which would affect our budget greatly. All but about three counties in the state are actually up in sales tax. But there's a caveat to that, and this really brings us home. Our Forward Analytics, we put together some work. Income in the state of Wisconsin this year, despite the pandemic and despite the layoffs you've heard about, was actually up 5.8%. It was up 5.8% because there was an $18 billion infusion of income into the state of Wisconsin through various programs. Without that, and we probably don't have that next year, without that, there would have been a 6% decline in income and probably spending, you know, with someone following it. So although we came through this year fairly unscathed because of the federal dollars that were allocated at the state level, we are not out of the woods. Of all the, of the 50 states, there were only 14, however, that were worse than us economically. So we are pretty close to the bottom of where it's at, and I think that's going to come home this coming year. And I only mention that as we go forward and what we're looking at in this coming year. So hopefully it continues to get better, hopefully with the vaccine out and things like that happening, counties and businesses will return more closely to normal. But they anticipated more than 1,000 Wisconsin restaurants will not reopen after the first year. That's a lot of the economy, a lot of employees in those most probably greatly affected based on income. So something to keep in mind is something as we go forward, as we look at, you know, revenues and spending. And I just wanted to share that because that really hit home in those meetings. All right, to the, to a happier end. Back to the packet. Referrals for December. Those went to the appropriate people, the note from the family of former Chairman Gordy Stargardt, thanking us for the resolution, his service, and then the resolution from Old Clark County meeting for public committees. All right, let's get into the packet, page six. The public hearing for the budget, the operations committee of Tuesday, November 10th, that was page six. Pages seven and eight, the operations committee of December 1st. Page nine to 10, Office of the County Clerk. Would the county clerk like to say anything? Have you gone through the election or?
I look good for 20, don't I? I feel like I aged a little bit through that process.
I have a question. Are we supposed to use this now?
Yeah, it would help. Supervisor.
It's on.
It's on. I don't have to do anything. Is it on?
It's on.
Okay. So I want, are there any elections scheduled for 2021?
There is one for sure, which will be on April 6th, which is our normal spring election, which includes most all of our township villages and cities, also school boards. We do not know yet if there will be a primary in February, but I'm thinking there probably will be because there's seven people running for state superintendent of public instruction. So the prob, I'm thinking we'll probably see a statewide primary. So two for now.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give it a chance because in our county, things went real well. And I can tell you, our results get posted faster than most counties around the state by days, oftentimes. So congratulations to 20-minute staff down there and those people who work elections around the county. Pages 11 through 15, monthly update from Human Resources. On page 16, the treasures report. Employee wellness on 17. And that brings us to the first resolutions in the packet. We have four budget resolutions here. I believe they're all budget reconciliation amendment-type resolutions. Is there any objection to taking those together? Are there four of those or three of those, Trent?
I think four.
Four of them. Yeah. Is there any objection to taking the budget amendments together? Okay, Trent, if you would, please read those four.
This will be Resolution 20-12-2. To amend the 2020 budget for human services, Norwood Health Center and Edgewater Haven programs for transfer of available appropriations to functions where actual expenditures are recorded. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The additional appropriations needed for transfers in are available and are not anticipated to be spent in the appropriations to be transferred out. The adjustment to the budget totals $608,000. Resolution 20-12-3. To amend the 2020 budget for humane officer for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, to transfer $5,500 from available balance in contingency to humane officer. At the time of this request, funds available in contingency are $435,000. The adjustment to the budget totals $5,500. Resolution 20-12-4. To amend the 2020 budget for UW extension projects for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, to transfer $6,500 from available balance in fund balance to UW extension project. The adjustment to the budget totals $6,500. Resolution 20-12-5. To amend the 2020 budget of various highway functions listed below for additional expenditures of $1,112,239, not anticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The adjustment budget totals $1,112,239.
Thank you. And I have a motion by Supervisor Wagner and a second by Supervisor Fire. Is there any discussion on these resolutions? Supervisors, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, my numbering was off with Trent's. Like I had on here, it said highway resolution was 1-4, and it came up as number five.
Because item 8-1 was moved forward.
Essentially.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I stand corrected by the county clerk again.
I was wondering too. I just didn't ask the question. All right. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Any meaningful discussion?
Keep in mind, you deal with the court of justice.
I thought we were civil.
Hamilton, yes. Bride?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curry?
Yes.
Thank you. You have resolutions, those resolutions passed unanimously. Thank you. Next two resolutions in your packet from the same committee, the exception of offer of sale on tax-deed properties. Any objections taking those together? All right, without objection. Trent?
This will be Resolution 20-12-6. To accept the offer of sale of tax-deeded property. Fiscal note, offered amount minus real estate taxes, special charges, delinquent utilities, special assessments, publication fees, and tax-deed expense net us a gain of $111,891.15. Resolution 20-12-7. To accept the offer of sale of tax-deeded property. Fiscal note, the offered amount minus real estate taxes, tax-deed expense, delinquent utilities, and special charges incur a loss of $13,597.79.
Okay, thank you. And I have a motion by Supervisor Fire, a second by Supervisor Wagner. Any discussion on these resolutions? Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you, Brad. Bride?
Bride, yes.
And Supervisor Curry?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. And those resolutions also pass unanimously. Thank you. All right, back to the packet, page 27 and 28, Health and Human Services Committee meeting of November 19th. Pages, well, 29 through 31, Board of Directors of North Central Community Action. Page 29 through 31, Supervisor Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to notify the board of a thank you note that I got from someone who has a family member in Edgewater Haven. I will take this to the Health and Human Services Committee on Thursday night, but I just wanted the full county board, as well as the members of the public, to know that there is great appreciation for the work of Edgewater Haven, our nursing home, in keeping the residents and staff as safe as they can. This individual was very, very complimentary of the staff and what they're trying to do to continue to allow family members to Skype and FaceTime and do all of that. But I just wanted people to know how, what a good job our Edgewater Haven staff is doing, and they are to be commended during these challenging times for doing such a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Back to the North Central Community Action, 29, 31. Any questions there? Our Wood County Health Department, 32 through 35, and again, extraordinary job that they've been doing, working a tremendous amount of hours, dealing with everything imaginable, and most of which was unimaginable, if you would have thought where we were last, you know, February or March, and where we still are today. The report from the Wood County Human Services Department, beginning with Director Brumings on page 36, and running through page 40, 36 through 40. The Edgewater Haven update from Larissa Ladder on 41 through 43. Any questions there? Veteran service officers report on 44 and 45. And then that brings me to the next resolution in the packet on page 46. Trent?
This will be Resolution 20-12-8. To implore Wood County residents to take actions to stop the spread of deadly COVID-19 virus. Fiscal note, no fiscal impact.
And I have a motion by Clendetti, and I have a second by Rosa. Discussion. Supervisor, answer.
I would like to uphold our suggested amendment to point six and seven on the layer fours, where it says, "If you test positive for COVID-19, stay home for 10 days from when symptoms began. Notify your close contacts and ask them to quarantine for 14 days from the last time they were around you." I would like for that to say, "Ask them to quarantine as directed by the Wood County Health Officer, just due to the changes in the DHS regulations," or DHS suggestions. The same would follow for point number seven. It says, "Stay home for 14 days." I'd like to say, "Stay home as directed by the Wood County Health Officer."
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Wagner, then a second to the amendment by Supervisor Clendetti. Is there any discussion on the amendment, basically changing the dates to the recognition of the health officer? Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion? Let me go to the board on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Please vote.
I'll say yes.
And then Curry and Bride?
Curry, yes. Bride, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm there.
And that resolution passes 18, or that amendment passes 18 to one. Now back to the resolution as amended. And is there any discussion on the resolution as amended? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote. Again, Supervisors Bride, Hamilton, and Curry?
Yes. Curry, yes. Bride, yes.
Thank you. And again, that resolution passed 18 to one. Thank you. Back to the packet, page 47, beginning on 47 through 51, minutes of the Wood County Public Safety Committee of November 9th. That's 47 through 51. Pages 52 through 56, information from the humane officer, 52 through 56. Page 57 through 66 is wage comparison information. Pages 57 through 66, and this was brought forward to deal with a resolution that's going to come forward here in a minute. Then we have the October monthly report from the Wood County Sheriff's Rescue Squad, beginning on 67, and going through page 72. On page 73, we have the Crime Stoppers Report, 74, K-9. The Natural Resources Patrols on 75. Operations overtime comp totals at 76 and 77. Beginning on page 78 and going through page 81 is the Public Safety Committee meeting, the Security Services Report, the doors 78 through 81. Beginning on page 82 and running through 94, various jail population and monitoring information. That's 82 through 94. And then that brings me to the resolution. I alluded to a minute earlier with the reason those wage, that wage information was in there. Page 95 in the packet. I would ask the clerk, please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-12-9. To address wage compression in the Wood County Sheriff's Department that is continuing due to the existing union contract and the implementation of the new wage plan. Fiscal note, total increase to wages and fringes estimated to be $33,789.45. No additional cost to the county. The required funds will be allocated from savings within the approved 2021 department budget.
And I have a motion by Supervisor Clendetti, a second by Supervisor Fisher. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Supervisor Rosa?
So I understand this wage compression. My, and I understand that, you know, the, the public safety people are still having negotiations going on. Did our wage study that we did address compression in other departments with supervisors? I guess Human Resources is keeping an eye on that because I assume that compression occurs in some of the other departments, and I just want to make sure that we're not just addressing compression in the sheriff's department, that we keep an eye on compression in our other departments as well?
Yeah, the answer is yes, and part of the reason here is that we have union contracts.
Right.
That we have them in some of the departments. The answer is yes. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, please vote.
Yes.
Hamilton, a yes, and Curry and Bride?
Curry, yes.
Thanks, Ken.
Curry. Bride, yes.
And Bride is a yes. And that resolution passes unanimously. There is some additional information with that on pages 96 and 97. We go further into the packet, beginning on page 98, minutes of the SEED Committee from November 4th. That begins on 98, runs through 102, 98 through 102. Any questions there? Same committee, their meeting of December 2nd, beginning on 103, and running through 107. Any questions? Golden Sands Resource Conservation Development Council Committees and various minutes, beginning on page 108, and these run from September through November. And part of this, the reason we get some of these is just, you know, COVID-related stuff when we can get things into packets and actually get meetings. But this runs from September through November. It's pages 108 through 129. 108 through 129. We have the North Central IFAC Board Minutes from September 4th, 130 through 132. We have the monthly update from UW Extension, beginning on 133, and running through 138. Any questions on extension? Land and Water Conservation, beginning on 139, running through 144, 139 through 144. Then we have monthly report from Planning and Zoning, beginning on 145, and running through 149. The Citizens Groundwater Group Meeting, 150 and 51. The End of the Year County Surveyors Report, 152 through 155. The Economic Development Recovery Meetings, these happen basically weekly. We have these on that, and the PPE. These started on October 22nd, ran through November 19th, and that was the economic recovery minutes. The PPE minutes, same thing, November 3rd and November 17th, on pages 166 and 167. Anybody have any questions on any of that stuff that we just ran through? All right, that brings us to the resolution in the packet on page 168, brought forth by the SEED Committee.
This will be Resolution 20-12-10. To place on the Wood County April 2021 ballot a referendum question on clean water. Fiscal note, minimal cost to the county depending on the size of the ballot.
I have a motion by Zerflu, I have a second by Fisher. Discussion. Any discussion? Is there any discussion on this resolution? Okay, I see none. Please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thanks, Brad.
Curry, yes.
Ken, thanks.
Bride, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. That resolution passes 18 to one, 18 to one. Next resolution in the packet, brought forth by the SEED Committee. The resolution's on 169. There's a number of pieces of accompanying information that run through page 175. Resolution again on 169. I ask the clerk, please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-12-11. Approve two zoning amendments to the Town of Grand Rapids zoning map. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The Town of Grand Rapids is responsible for any costs associated with administering their town zoning ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion by Fire, I have a second by Zerflu. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? All right, please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you.
Curry, yes.
Thank you.
Bride, yes.
Supervisor Bride, three near from you there. That resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. Page 176 in your packet, minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee on 176. This is the November 6th meeting, running through page 179, 176 through 179. You just have, I don't know, something from the Animal Medical and Surgical Clinic here, a bill, 180. And then on page 181, minutes of the Judicial Legislative Committee of December 3rd, and that's 181, 2, and 3. The Criminal Justice Coordinator ADHOC Committee meeting from Wednesday, November 11th, on 184, 185, and 186. Memos from Corp Counsel on 187 and 188. Additional memorandum on 189 and 190. And then on 191, a final note from Corp Counsel. Anybody have any questions there? Registered Deeds Monthly Report on page 192. And then that brings us to the next resolution in the packet, page 193.
This will be Resolution 20-12-12. To create three positions within the Criminal Justice Coordinator budget, including a Criminal Just Manager, a Criminal Justice Program Specialist, and a Criminal Justice Administrative Support position. These positions are already funded through both grant and county levy funds via contract with Attic Correctional. The shift allows for cost savings. Fiscal note, savings in year one total $15,331.30. In year two, savings totals $13,265.41.
Okay, and I have a motion by Supervisor Clendetti, a second by Supervisor LaFontaine. Any discussion on the resolution? Supervisor Rosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've had a lot of discussions about FTEs and things like that over the last couple of months. And this is a perfect example of positions that start with being grant-funded, and then this slippery slope begins and, and all of that. So I, I just, in the Health and Human Services Committee, we have a lot of grant-funded positions. And we have asked our department heads to make certain that they do a lot of good documentation as to the savings and the benefit of having those. Because once these positions get all on tax levy, then I think that's the time that serious discussions take place about the return on investment of these positions. And so this is a perfect example of how we just kind of slip right into more FTEs that are originally grant-funded and then end up being on county tax dollars. So I guess my, my challenge is to make sure that people keep good documentations to the benefits of these so that when they end up being totally on tax levy dollars, we can justify these positions to the public. Thank you.
Supervisor Fisher, then I'll go to Supervisor Wagner. Supervisor Fisher, then I'll go to Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate Supervisor Roser's comments, and I agree with you. I think we do need to have good documentation, especially when positions are grant-funded. I think what we need to also keep in mind, though, is this, these contracted positions have actually been funded since 2007 through the TAD grant, and I do not see that changing. Now, obviously, it always could, and I think when that day comes, we have to look at the return on investment and see two things. One, if the grant funding has ended, that's one thing we need to look at, and two, even if the grant funding has ended, has it possibly saved us money in other areas? Because, believe it or not, I'm not, I'm not against tax levy positions if we can prove that there's actual savings taking place in other parts of our budget. For example, ideally, the program should be solving a problem with recidivism. We want people, we want less people, I should say, to be going to jails. And so I believe very, very passionately that we need to truly give these positions as much as we can with the hopes of actually saving money in the long run in our town budget by setting people up to succeed, to go through the program, and not be constantly in that vicious cycle of it there. So I appreciate your comments, but I just think we also need to keep in mind, there is a savings here, and we need to also look at the ROI. Thank you.
Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that, I was really against this for the same reasons that Supervisor Roser was talking about. This was slippery slope again, here we go. I do know that if that grant ever ends, I will be one of the first ones to stand up and say that the Judiciary and Legislative Committee, which has oversight over the Drug Court and the courts itself, would have to come back and justify that, those positions again if that grant ever, ever ended. The one thing that made me change my vote on this, well, there are a couple things that made me change my vote. Number one is I support the Drug Court concept completely. It's doing a great thing for Wood County, and I think it's something that has to continue. That being said, the three positions we're talking about are the only staff that the judge has. Therefore, if we had done away with it, if we had done away with the, if the grant went away, or if we had done away with, or not voted to put it in these positions as we are, the Drug Court would have been handcuffed and been carrying out its mission. So basically, that's why I supported this. But I agree, we're going to have to take a hard look at this, at grant-funded positions in the future. And we said that, I stood at that podium a month ago and said that, and then the next thing I know, I get this resolution in front of me, and I won't tell you what I said under my breath, but it was, it's been very bothersome to me in that case. Again, I will support this resolution. I hope we don't see any more of this coming out of the Ad-Hoc Committee, because I think this is, I think I saw stuff in there that you wanted to do, you wanted to put in other courts, like Juvenile, Juvenile Mental Health Court, I believe it was. I think that's in there, and I think you also want your own Noticelight Committee, too. So anyway, we'll be looking at those things in the future, and we'll be happy to look at it after the first of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Clendenning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see anything in there about having our Oversight Committee. You know, this is all still in the planning stage, and, and yes, we have an Ad-Hoc Committee until March first, so after that, it'll be up to the Judicial Legislative Committee. I don't think there's anything hitting here that we're doing something wrong or intend to do something wrong. Drug Court, been in existence here, I think we were one of the first ones to have Drug Court. And if the funding ever stopped, I would suppose we would not have Drug Court. But yes, I agree with that, but I don't see, you know, anything hitting in that Ad-Hoc Committee that, that is a surprise, and, and whatever comes out of that Ad-Hoc Committee definitely goes before the full Committee and then the full County Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else out there? Supervisor Zerflu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to test the patience of the Vice Chair, that's why I'm rising. Just kidding. My two things that I still have doubts about is, two years from now, it seems some people put stock in the thing that a grant will always be there, and having written a few in my twenty-two years Chief of Police, I know they're not always there. Any other biggest concern I had with this resolution, Bill just answered when he assured me, there's nothing hitting in there like a separate Oversight Committee for the position, that it will remain with Judicial Legislative. I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next Supervisor Fisher.
I can be very patient, so thank you.
Why don't everybody get a first shot at this before we let back to second?
I just, I want to echo what Supervisor Clendenning shared. I don't recall any conversation of Oversight Committee. This will stay under Judicial Legislative. The Ad-Hoc Committee is scheduled to end, I believe, February first. So there's no, there's no discussion of Oversight Committee. Early on, there was, there was discussion of where this position would report to, so I don't know if that's what Supervisor Legner is referring to, but I just want to make sure that the body knows that there is no discussion of changing the Oversight Committee. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Brad.
Go ahead, Brad.
I raised my hand, but you didn't see it.
I'm sorry.
Anyhow, this will be no different than if we left it alone, didn't do anything, and it would still be in the, it would still be in the hands of outside contract. We'd lose the brand, we'd have to figure out whether we want to do it. This is a cost, cost effective, if it is cost effective, it will be taken into it. If it's not, it's not, it's not, it's, I understand all the, all the debate on it, but as far as I'm concerned, I would, I would be looking at it whether or not we brought it back, because it was brought by the right committees to check it out, see if, see if we can bring it out. What we're saying, fifteen dollars per year, fifteen dollars a second year, if we have a problem, then we look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hamilton. If you could raise your hand a little higher next time.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Any further? Supervisor Clendenning, are you, you're halfway up there.
Can you see me, Brad? Okay, yes, just, just to go back, you know, I, I, I'm worried about somebody thinking that there's, there's rumors that we're going to discontinue this, and it is not, and it is March first is when, when this Ad-Hoc Committee. Everything we do goes back to the Judicial Legislative Committee. You know, it's, there's a lot of things in the planning here, and I, I, I don't want people to derail what we're doing just by a rumor that we might be thinking of something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any further discussion? Ready, Trent? All right, I ask you to please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Curry, a no. Thank you, Ken.
Curry. Curry, yes. I have, yes. Bry, yes.
Thank you. That, thank you, gentlemen, that resolution passes unanimously. As we get, as we move forward here, just to say, I just make a quick comment, you know, we, I oftentimes get the opportunity to sit with the Local Government Institute, and we have a big whiteboard in our offices, and it basically starts with, what would we never do? What must we do? You know, as we throw ideas at, at different problems and situations, and it's amazing how often what we never do, what we would never, ever do ends up in what we should do. So I guess as we move forward as a board, and we look at things, we always say, you know, what will, what will it mean tomorrow? How do we adapt, and what do we do? So I really appreciate the conversation, I think we touched on a lot of the issues on this, this recently handled resolution that we deal with every day, and, and things do change, and we have to look at it on an annual basis or even more regularly as we tend to try to improve programs. So appreciate the conversation and appreciate that thought process, that sometimes it isn't thinking outside the box, it's forget the box, it's, you know, how do we approach things from a different perspective? This next resolution on page one ninety-five, I'm pretty sure this was drafted by our clerk, but it says it came from the Judicial Legislative Committee, so Trent, if you would, please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution twenty-dash-twelve-dash-thirteen. To recognize the work done by municipal clerks and poll workers in Wood County, in particular in processing all of the votes in the November third, 2020 election. Fiscal note: None. It is worth noting that if clerks and poll workers botch up any aspect of the vote counting, that many kinds of additional costs to the county could flow from such mistakes.
And I have a motion by Supervisor LaFontaine and a second by Supervisor Clendenning. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Didn't think there'd probably be any. All right, you want to get that ready to vote, Trent? All right, if you please vote.
Paulson, yes.
Curry, yes.
Supervisor Bry? Thank you. Virtual votes are in, that passes unanimously. Next resolution in the packet, also brought forth by the J&amp;L Committee, on page, beginning on page one ninety-six through one ninety-eight with the additional information that goes with it. Trent, would you please read the resolution?
This will be Resolution twenty-dash-twelve-dash-fifteen. To request the Wisconsin Counties Association to formally support nonpartisan redistricting by the state legislature and pursue legislation thereon. Fiscal note: No cost.
Hold it. You skipped the resolution. We can go in that order if you want. Did you number it already?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Should we take that one?
No. Let's not take that one.
All right, forget it. You know, we just passed a resolution saying what a good job they do.
The poll workers, not the county.
One, one minute later, the only mistake he's ever made.
First of all, Zerflu, I see you looking at me, so shut up. Okay, second of all, resolution.
Let's, let's do a rewind and go back to page one ninety-six.
Resolution, I'm just anxious to get this meeting done with. Resolution twenty-dash-twelve-dash-fourteen. To approve a face mask use policy in county-owned buildings. Fiscal note: No significant cost.
Okay, I have a motion by Clendenning and a second by Zerflu. Discussion. Supervisor Wagner, then.
I'll be brief, I feel like I could go on about this for a very long time, but we don't have that much time anymore. I support this really strongly. For me, this comes down to respect. My mask protects me, yours, I'm sorry, my mask protects you, your mask protects me, and I think that we need to do a good job of protecting the employees in our county buildings. And I think that we need to be good role models for the county as to how we want to treat each other.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? I'm sorry. Supervisor Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will support this resolution. I was disappointed in a bit of the language. As someone who has consulted with healthcare professionals and has been told to not wear a mask, it's very difficult, because as I'm reading, I feel I have to wear one to even enter a county building or participate in this meeting, and even today, as I've been sitting here, I've been struggling a great deal. I do want to be respectful, and I do appreciate that, but I would have hoped there would have been some language to acknowledge some exemption. I haven't overly publicized it, my own reasons, for personal reasons, but I do feel there should be some exemption, and I know, even from talking to another supervisor, it's hard to know who truly has a medical exemption, and I understand that, but as someone who has it, truly has it, it is very difficult. And so, again, I will support it, but I was disappointed with the language.
Supervisor Clendenning.
Mr. Chairman, of course, I very much support this.
I want to say one thing that, I think it's leaders, and, and I bring this up at every county board meeting, why isn't people wearing masks? Why aren't county board people wearing masks? You know, we're the leaders, we're the exempt part of it. And I don't understand why. I, I could see if we did not have Webbix, like the three people that are on that today, I got a lot of phone calls about people, I'm going to say four phone calls, about this issue. And that is, boy, I would like to attend that meeting, but I get too emotional, and I understood that I couldn't attend your meeting on the fifteenth because it's, public comment can only be made inside there, you can't make public comment from outside of it. And they, they think that is, that was terrible, that the public could not make comment. However, I got one on the mask and the fact, the fact that they're not coming to the courthouse because, because of this resolution, it requires a mask. And their constitutional right is, they don't want to have to wear a mask if they don't want to. Well, I said, if you come in the courthouse now and this resolution passed, you have to wear one, or you have to have a medical exemption, or in a particular incident, the Chairman of the County Board, the chairperson, the administrative coordinator can exempt you from it. So, so that's the way it is. I think this is real important, I, I really, not, not so much because of my age, because I, I have people in my family that, that will not wear masks. I have one of my sons that will, if they, they require a mask to go into Walgreens Drug Store, he will not go into it, or never patronize it again. So that, that's what I deal with. But when it comes to government that we are, I think this is real important. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Zerflu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I support this policy of using a face mask, but I do have a concern about our department heads in the courthouse. It is quite obvious that some business conducted, I'll pick on my favorite person, our county clerk, that there's function in his office that you cannot have a mask on to get him done. So the only thing that's still pulling on me that I'm not a hundred percent for it, but I will vote for it, is, is this going to infringe on department heads, if you follow my drift? So I just wanted to make that clear.
We tried to weigh in either way on this, but the answer, the answer to that is, is shouldn't. We tried to create enough latitude in this where employees within their workspace, and we tried to define that as workspace, not just an office, with department head approval, have the ability to have those masks down. It's basically interaction with the public within the hallways, and there have been exemptions that we have granted based on medical or other reasons. There's not a lot, you know, it's kind of just like the speed limit, you know, you're supposed to go fifty-five, some people go fifty-six, some do ninety, I guess we're trying to stop the ones that are doing ninety, the ones that are going fifty-six, you know, we create a little latitude. So I think Supervisor Ballas, that touched on, said, you know, you have the opportunity, and I think Supervisor Clendenning said the same thing, you can pick or choose what businesses you patronize, where you go, you know, based on what masking requirement they have, but if you're somebody who is compromised, there's only one courthouse, there's only one place you can go, you can't shop at a different one. And so, you know, we've tried to create balance, is what we're trying to do. So anyhow, that answered the question a little bit. Back to discussion, back to discussion. All right, I see no more discussion, then I would ask you to please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Curry, yes. Bry, yes.
Thank you. That resolution passed seventeen-two, seventeen-two. Next resolution in the packet, page one ninety-nine.
Déjà vu. Resolution twenty-dash-twelve-dash-fifteen. To request the Wisconsin Counties Association to formally support nonpartisan redistricting by the state legislature and pursue legislation thereon. Fiscal note: No cost.
All right, I have a motion by fire, I have a second by Clendenning. Any discussion on this one? Any discussion? All right, see none? Please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Curry, yes. Bry, yes.
That resolution passes unanimously. That resolution passes unanimously. All right, back in the packet here on page two hundred.
Yes.
Minutes of the Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee, two hundred and two-oh-one. They're minutes from December third, on two-oh-two, three, and four. Monthly update from the Highway Commissioner, beginning on two-oh-five, and they have runs through page two-fourteen, two-oh-five to two-fourteen. I have various information here from Park and Forestry, beginning on two-fifteen and running through two-nineteen. There are revenue reports, expenses, and such, any questions there? The Property Information Technology Committee Meeting of December seven, beginning on two-twenty, running through two-twenty-four. Questions there? Letter of Comments from Ruben, our Facilities Manager, Ruben Van Teasland, two-twenty-five. We have the monthly report from IT, beginning on two-twenty-six and running through two-thirty, two-twenty-six through two-thirty. Minutes, the October minutes from the Aging Disability Resource Center, October eight, beginning on two-thirty-one, running through two-thirty-four. And then minutes of the McMillan Memorial Library Board, two-thirty-five and two-thirty-six. South Central Library System, their Board of Trustees, two-thirty-seven, two-thirty-eight. And minutes of the University Commission meeting on August twentieth, on two-thirty-nine and two-forty. That takes me through the packet, is there anything else that needs to come before the board? Supervisor Zerflue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to give a special thank you to all the supervisors and to our county clerk, I've been picking on them all day for volunteering to lead prayers during twenty-twenty-one, and the fee for that, your pay will be the same as last year, with the man and boy or the man and girl, whatever.
Thank you.
Okay, this is, I appreciate, you know, this is, we get to this kind of special time of year, you know, we do have a lot of people that are, you know, losing some vacation and are off as we approach the end of the year, although it isn't on a annual basis, it's from their data hire, I guess, or anniversary, but, you know, I'd ask you all just to, you know, take a reminder, take a minute, reflect on this past year, which has, it's just been extraordinary. I mean, if you would have told me last year, I was out in DC when this COVID situation kind of broke, you know, I was out there in January, February, where there were two or three cases in the nation, if you would have asked me if we would be in this situation, you know, in June or July, I would have said no, you know, and here we are, end of the year, still dealing with a lot of these issues as we meet virtually, try to meet in person, obviously, events have been canceled or rescheduled all over, it's been difficult, so, I just ask you to continue to have patience with everybody, continue to do what we do, and I want to thank you as this is your end, so, nothing else to come before the board? All right, Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Hamilton, Supervisor Hamilton.
Thank you, sir. Do you get anything from the legal Wisconsin municipalities?
I, I do. I do get some updates from them, yes, I do.
There's opportunities against grants and training, one came in December twenty-twenty. I'm going to send it, sorry, clerk, in the sentence, clerk, that clerk running all around, people can give it to whoever they want, there's a lot of stuff in this, that is, that is, I think it's going to be good for everybody, but I'll just send it to the clerk, and I think you're going to send it to everybody else, with that, I moved it.
All right, you moved, I guess, Supervisor Bry, your second, and even if I declared, all in favor, signified by I. All right, we're doubly adjourned, thank you very much.